Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Monday, October 18 Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Here.
Sale?
Here.
Starr?
Here.
Brecky?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Kylie?
Here.
Tonight I bring you a scripture reading from First Timothy. First of all, then, I urge that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgiving be made for everyone, for kings and all in high positions, so that we may lead a quiet and peaceable life in all godliness and dignity. Let us pray. Almighty God, bless the public servants in this government in Sioux Falls, that they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. Help them to use authority to serve faithfully and to promote our common life. Amen.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we thank Pastor Mattson for being here for that tonight. We'll move on to item four, which is our consent agenda. Any changes to be made there?
Move approval. Second, Jensen.
Counselor Sale?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull subitem six from Agenda Item Six, please.
All right. Any other changes to be made? If not, we got a motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve. Hearing none, let's take a vote, then, please.
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. We'll move on to item fifteen, our regular agenda. Look for a motion, please.
Move to approve. Kylie?
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion on that, counsel? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Just before we continue on, just want to review public input for tonight. For regular agenda items, our comments are limited to three minutes unless it's being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input will be limited to five minutes. And for our regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. So with that being said, we'll move on to the item that we pulled, subitem six.
Excuse me, Mayor. I'm sorry. I apologize. I just noticed that item nine on the, you know, on the project items, I need to remove myself that from that, so if we could vote on that one separately.
Well, we already voted on those.
Is there a way I can... My daughter is a partner in that law firm, so I've tried to routinely remove myself from any of the service agreements. You know, I take the advice and stuff that their firm gives us, but I don't try to, I try to stay away from any votes on the service agreement.
You know what we do in this case?
Well, I think the vote's been had. I think the note is well-made, and I, Tom can weigh in. I could tell you one thing is that, as a matter of state law, if the remainder of the council would find that that's a concern on a vote, all, the remedy for that is invalidating the vote, and it was a unanimous vote. So, efforting from that point of view, it's not really an issue, but procedurally, the vote's been cast, Tom. I mean, if you move to reconsider on the prevailing side, I've...
Yeah, I think that can be done, or we can note in the minutes what you stated.
I think we can go with the latter, considering it was an ADO vote, so.
Yeah, if you could just note in the record that I, you know, it's always my intent to remove myself from any of the service agreements, any of the payment agreements by the council. And I apologize that I didn't see that, to do that this time.
All right, we'll have the minutes reflect that accordingly, and then we'll move to our pulled agenda item, which is subitem six from Agenda Item Six.
That subitem is fire rescue public safety training campus to award a bid, Pesca Construction Incorporated, in the amount of forty-two million, six hundred twenty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Counselor Sale?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've asked the police chief and fire chief to come up and explain a little bit. There were several options that we had all looked at at that time, and now the bid has been awarded, and I'd give them the opportunity to explain where we're at today.
Correct. Thank you, Mayor, counsel. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to bring this contract in front of you for Pesca Construction. Here representing all public safety with Police Department of Metro, Director McMahon, and Police Chief Tumore, here with me today. So, we have worked closely with the engineering firm, with the entire design team. They've been in contact with Pesca Construction and working through exactly what it means to deliver this contract. We're very excited for the product they're going to deliver. We're confident with what the bid is here, and we're excited to move this forward. So, part of what you're talking to there is the alternates, that we are accepting and a couple that we are not. The design team throughout has been working with all of our teams to address what our training needs are throughout, and then to make sure as we move forward in this bidding process, that there were pieces that were included, so that we would have an opportunity if there wasn't a bidding environment that was, we were able to meet inside of our budget. Our entire team has been working together, and we're very excited with the package that we're able to put together here. Some of the items, so the two items that we are leaving off, we're not selecting as alternates, would be the low-speed EVOC course and then the training wall. Part of those pieces, when you incorporate them into our campus, are really kind of a dual purpose. So, they were brought in there with the intention that if we didn't have the bidding environment that we were able to enjoy, we would have been able to elect to take those pieces in lieu of some of those higher-priced items. So, the fact that we are able to get a high-speed EVOC course, we do have the full Main Street campus, we were able to take the alternate for the two-story commercial building and the USAR. With all of those incorporated, we don't feel that it's prudent to take those other alternates at this time.
Thank you, Chief. Other questions for the chief while we have him here? Counselor Starr?
Yes. Chief?
Yep.
Tell me if this is a good number or bad number. What's, where are we at for the overall budget of the facility, land, consultants, start to finish? What are we looking at for a total price out the door?
So, we're looking to maintain a contingency budget inside of there. So, we are at the allotted budget for the entire project. There's a fair amount of estimates still remaining in when we look at the total FF and E project, parts of the project, along with technology. And then, just additionally with that contingency, we feel like we're in a good spot to meet the budget constraints that we're at.
Total?
The total budget with the appropriation is fifty-five million, seven hundred thousand.
Thank you.
Other questions for Chief McCaravy? Counselor Nitzer?
So, to clarify for the EVOC course?
Yep.
Is the low and the high speed, is that two different options? Or is the high, like the Cadillac, and replaces the low speed? I don't quite grasp.
Sorry. To some extent, it does replace the need for that to some extent. So, the high-speed EVOC is what I've been, I've been told by PD, I'm not supposed to call the racetrack. So, what you see, the larger oval track that's on there with the intercourse in the middle, with those intersecting, those pieces, we are able to train on those rather than go to the spot that would be just to the west of that, that is just a square concrete pad. So, in addition with that, we have the road network that's inside of the campus. So, essentially what we're able to do, that rather than move our training to what we have right now is called a low-speed EVOC, and we perform those functions with cones, and we simulate a lot of experiences. Now with what we are able to build, we're able to incorporate that into more real-world training opportunities, moving inside of those structures, moving into the parking spots, and then operating in the road networks that's in that high-speed EVOC.
Would it be fair to say the low speed was an option if you couldn't afford the high speed? And when you're getting the high, so you're happier than?
Absolutely.
The low?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Other questions for Chief McCaravy? Or Chief Tum, or Scott McMahon from Metro? All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'd look for a motion and put it on the floor, then you'll prove this.
Second, Jensen.
All right, I'm going to give that to Counselor Kylie. Motion in a second there. Any discussion then amongst the council here? All right, hearing none, let's vote on this one, please.
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. We'll move on to our next item, please.
Item sixteen, new twenty-twenty-one packaged liquor license for getting lit, twenty-seven oh eight South Ellis Road, with conditional use permit, one-three-one-seven-six dash twenty-twenty, being approved on November fourth, twenty-twenty. Item seventeen, new twenty-twenty-one-twenty-two retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License for Golden Coin Casino Incorporated, twenty-seven oh four South Ellis Road, Suite one-oh-one, with conditional use permit, one-three-one-seven-six dash twenty-twenty, being approved on November fourth, twenty-twenty. Pending final inspections for Health and Building Services. Item eighteen, request to add video lottery terminals with the twenty-twenty-one-twenty-two retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License for Golden Coin Casino Incorporated, twenty-seven oh four South Ellis Road, Suite one-oh-one. Item nineteen, new twenty-twenty-one-twenty-two retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License for Golden Coin Casino Incorporated, twenty-seven oh four South Ellis Road, Suite one-oh-two, with conditional use permit, one-three-one-seven-six dash twenty-twenty, being approved on November fourth, twenty-twenty. Pending final inspections for Health and Building Services. Item twenty, request to add video lottery terminals with the twenty-twenty-one-twenty-two retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License for Golden Coin Casino Incorporated, twenty-seven oh four South Ellis Road, Suite one-oh-two. Item twenty-one, new twenty-twenty-one-twenty-two retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License for Golden Coin Casino Incorporated, twenty-seven oh four South Ellis Road, Suite one-oh-three, with conditional use permit, one-three-one-seven-six dash twenty-twenty, being approved on November fourth, twenty-twenty. Pending final inspections for Health and Building Services. Item twenty-two, request to add video lottery terminals with the twenty-twenty-one-twenty-two retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License for Golden Coin Casino Incorporated, twenty-seven oh four South Ellis Road, Suite one-oh-three. Item twenty-three, new twenty-twenty-one packaged liquor license and renewal of twenty-twenty-two packaged liquor license for Chevy's Fresh Mex, twenty-eight oh one South Louise Avenue, CUP not required. Item twenty-four, new twenty-twenty-one-twenty-two retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License for Johnny Carino's, twenty-three-ten South Louise Avenue. Item twenty-five, new twenty-twenty-one packaged liquor license and renewal of twenty-twenty-two packaged liquor license for Freedom Value Centers, sixteen oh one South Minnesota Avenue. New twenty-twenty-two packaged liquor license for Gash Barca LLC, twenty-four-twelve East Tenth Street, CUP not required. Item twenty-seven, new twenty-twenty-two packaged liquor license and new twenty-twenty-two off-sale delivery license for Thirsty Duck, nine forty-five South Marion Road, Suite one-oh-one. Item twenty-eight, transfer of twenty-twenty-one-twenty-two retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License and twenty-twenty-one retail wine and cider license from Top Shelf Entertainment LLC, Wine and Canvas, fourteen-twelve West Forty-first Street, to Jody Baumgartner Black Cat Art Studio, fourteen-twelve West Forty-first Street, with conditional use permit, one-two-eight-eight-zero dash twenty-twenty, being approved on October seventh, twenty-twenty. Item twenty-nine, transfer of twenty-twenty-one-twenty-two retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License and twenty-twenty-one retail wine and cider license from Ashna LLC Extra Time Sports Bar, forty-seven-nineteen East Arrowhead Parkway, to Alamami Camara Extra Time Sports Bar, forty-seven-nineteen East Arrowhead Parkway, with conditional use permit, eighty-two oh nine dash twenty-eighteen, being approved on April fourth, twenty-eighteen. And item thirty, request to add video lottery terminals with the twenty-twenty-one-twenty-two retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License for Extra Time Sports Bar, forty-seven-nineteen East Arrowhead Parkway.
Good evening, Jamie.
Good evening. Jamie Palmer with Licensing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for items sixteen through thirty.
All right, thank you, Jamie. Anyone from the public here to speak on these items? Counselors, you got any questions for Jamie on any of these? Counselor Starr?
Yes, thank you. Sorry. I'm looking at items seventeen through twenty-two, and I guess maybe that it's more of a question for the applicant, where we're putting three video lottery establishments right on top of each other. And so, I guess I'm concerned about how they... Keeping myself in the suitable location, suitable person mentality. So, I guess maybe my question's more for them, if we're waiting to ask the applicant a question or two.
See applicant here by chance for that? Doesn't look like it.
I don't see him.
Thank you.
Other questions for Jamie on any of those items? All right, I look for a motion.
Move approval. Second, Kylie.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Kylie. There a discussion on that, counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Nitzer?
I can maybe add a little bit of context. So, I did notice this as well, and there's actually three entrances to it. This is the second one. Crown Casino did one recently, very nearby, and they have three entrances, one on the back, one on the side, and one on the front. And they've figured out with the building codes how to essentially chop it up into three, and they're meeting the requirement of having an entrance into all of them. And so, they're doing thirty machines, and it may not be that long before we see somebody figure out how to do forty and go on all sides. So, I'm not making a value judgment, I'm just saying that they've found some creative ways to do more machines. So, there's, that's how they're doing it. They're on the end of the strip mall, they've got one door on the front, one on the side, one on the back. So, it's Suite one-oh-one, one-oh-two, one-oh-three, in the same unit. And building has looked at it, it meets our ordinance, it requires a separation and all of that, so.
Thank you, counselor. Other discussion on that, then? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote on the motion to approve these items, then.
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Okay, that passes eight to zero. Move to item thirty-one.
Item thirty-one, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located on East Twenty-first Street between South Fourth Avenue and South Seventh Avenue from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban and RT One Single Family Residential Traditional Districts to the RHP Single Family Residential Historic Preservation District, number one-four-nine-five-nine dash twenty-twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November second, twenty-twenty-one. Private applicants, multiple property owners.
Hey, Jason.
Hey, good evening, Mayor, City Council. Jason Bieber with Planning and Development Services. As Tom indicated, the applicant owner here are various property owners along the boulevard between Fourth and Seventh Avenue. The purpose is they're looking to zone these lots within the McKennan Park Historic District to the Single Family Historical Preservation District. We haven't seen this before, this would be our first one in the city. This district allows some additional historic preservation protections, as well as some reduced setbacks similar to our RT One zoning district. Some of these lots on the south side of the boulevard are rather small, less than fifty feet wide, and really, that's how it came about. They were looking to do some improvements to the property. We thought maybe this was an option. We did do two neighborhood meetings. We went out to the neighbors. We went out to the property owners and really just said to them, is this something you guys would like to do? If it is, sign the petition, and we can move forward with this. We did have a second neighborhood meeting with various property owners adjacent to this, and along with some of the McKennan Park Association chairman, and about twenty-five people were in attendance. They were all pretty positive and supportive of this specific request, so.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Counselors, you got any questions for Jason here? Counselor Nitzer, go for it.
Can I assume, if I see gaps, that there's some that are electing not to go into the historic district?
Correct. It was all homeowner, property owner-driven. We felt like we needed to get a substantial amount of properties to just, to do this zoning district. We just didn't do, want to do a one-off. That's where we kind of went out into the neighborhood with the help of Diane Decoyer, and really said, hey, here's your options, this is what we're looking at doing. If it's something you're interested in, please sign the petition. If it's not, then we would just zone that property, RT One, and went forward with that aspect, so.
So, these are, these are all landowners that are voluntarily
Yep.
asking to be brought in?
To do it, and we're just helping them facilitate the rezoning, so.
And it's been a while since I looked at the zoning ordinance. I mean, this is residential historic preservation, and it... But, does that have any tie to being on the national register or the state register? Is there any connection to that?
Well, they're already on that, so they're going to have to go through Board of Historic Preservation. There are some additional requirements within the zoning ordinance. They're probably going to be handled because they're already historical in nature, but there's some things where they have to meet this interior standards, or they need a conditional use. And then there's another one where the planning director has to look at any alterations and things like that. So, they've already kind of got those protections, but it's just some additional things on top of that, so.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions for Jason? All right, can I get a motion, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November two?
So moved.
Nitzer? Second.
Kylie?
All right, motion by Nitzer, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion there? All right, let's take a vote on that, please.
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item thirty-two, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located forty-six oh five West Sixty-Ninth Street from the AG Agriculture District to the C-three Commercial Community District, number one-four-nine-nine-eight dash twenty-twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November second, twenty-twenty-one. Private applicant, Sayer and Associates, Thad Roberts.
The applicant here is Sayer Associates. The owner is Bentwood Place LLC. It's located south of West Sixty-Ninth Street, just across from the Ovira Heart Hospital. It's about point-two-six acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking to take this small parcel and then combine it with the existing commercial property there for future retail development.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on this? Counsel, any questions for Jason? All right, I look for a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November two, here.
Move approval.
Second, Erickson.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Erickson. On that, any discussion here? Let's vote on that one, please.
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item thirty-three?
Mr. Mayor, I need to recuse myself.
Be back. Counselor Erickson is recused. And we will go to thirty-three.
Item thirty-three, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at twenty-ten and twenty-twelve West Twenty-second Street from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RD One Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District, number one-five-zero-zero-nine dash twenty-twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November second, twenty-twenty-one. Private applicant, Erickson Properties LLC, Tony Erickson.
The applicant owner here is Erickson Property. It's located at twenty-ten and twenty-twelve West Twelve, or Twenty-second Street, excuse me, just east of Western Avenue. It's about point-one-three acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking to match the correct zoning with the current use of a duplex on the property.
All right, thanks. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one? Counsel, questions here on this one? All right, look for a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November two.
So moved.
Pro?
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Kylie on that. Discussion here? Let's vote on it, please.
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Counselor Erickson is on her way back, and we will move to item thirty-four.
Item thirty-four, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at thirty-three oh one East Rice Street from the I-one Light Industrial District to the MH Manufacture Residential Housing District, number one-five-zero-seven-nine dash twenty-twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November second, twenty-twenty-one. Private applicant, Painter Properties, Steve Painter.
The applicant owner here is Steve Painter. It's located south of East Rice Street and east of North Bonson Avenue. It's about point-five-nine acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they've kind of been utilizing this as a mobile home park as a portion of it, kind of a gentleman's agreement over the years. Now they're actually looking at purchasing this from the property owner, so they're looking to rezone that and incorporate it with the existing mobile home park property.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Counselors, any questions here? All right, look for a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November two.
So moved, Erickson.
Second, Sale.
Motion by Erickson, seconded by Sale. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item thirty-five, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at forty-one-hundred West Sixtieth Street, north from the C-four Commercial Regional and the I-one Light Industrial Districts to the I-one Light Industrial and I-two Heavy Industrial Districts, number one-five-zero-eight-nine dash twenty-twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November second, twenty-twenty-one. Private applicant, Enclave Companies, Brian Bachman.
The applicant here is Carrie Franklin. The owner's Enclave Development. It's located at the northeast corner of I-twenty-nine and North Career Avenue, just east of the Walmart on Sixtieth Street. It's about seventy-eight point-seven-five acres in size. We have seen this one quite a bit. They are proposing to rezone that southern portion to I-one, and then the northern portion to I-two, and really just to give more flexibility as this development continues to evolve. They keep wanting a little bit additional flexibility on the uses that can go out here, so.
Anyone from the public here to speak on item thirty-five? All right, any questions, counsel, for Jason here?
Move approval. Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen, to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November two. Discussion on that one? All right, let's vote on it, please.
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item thirty-six.
Item thirty-six, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located south of West Forty-first Street and west of South Ellis Road from the AG Agriculture District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District, RD Two Townhome Residential Suburban District, and RA Two Apartment Residential Moderate Density District, number one-five-one-zero-one dash twenty-twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November second, twenty-twenty-one. Private applicant, Empire Homes, Brady Hyde.
The applicant owner here is Brady Hyde. It's located south of West Forty-first Street and west of South Ellis Road. It's about forty-four acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing a future single-family townhome and apartment residential development.
Anyone from the public here to speak on item thirty-six? Come on up, sir.
Good evening. Hello. Rick Dunlap, Key Real Estate, forty-one oh one Southwest Port Avenue. I'm here tonight representing the owners of the property to the west, Klein Properties, LCC. If you look up on the map, is what we, we don't have any disagreement as far as the layout other than they're pushing, that's a quarter line on the west side, and they're taking Ronseek Avenue and pushing that out onto their ground so that if they ever develop that, they're going to assume all the cost of putting in Ronseek Avenue. That's a quarter line. So, that's a collector's street that should be on the boundary, and they should only have to give up forty feet, not eighty, down the road. They were never notified about any zoning or annexation on this. And I live right beside them, and we bought the ground from them, and so they asked me to take a look at this last week, and that's where I saw that.
All right, thanks, Rick.
Any questions, or?
It's not a dialogue, but if there's questions, they'll pull you up.
Okay.
We'll get through the item here, and then, any other folks here to speak on this tonight? All right, counselors, you got any questions for Jason on this? Counselor Nitzer, go ahead.
Yeah, so, let's talk about what Rick said. Usually, you would have two adjacent developers split the cost, as he said. It'd be like a forty-forty, you know, you would both do forty feet of, of the road. Do you know what's going on with, with that? And I assume that there's a preliminary subdivision plan coming behind this, but what, what's going on with this, with this road?
Uh, we did get a, a comment from Mr. Dunlap last week, and so our engineering department has reached out to Brady Hyde to kind of get that dialogue going. You're correct, uh, the first meeting in November, we will have the preliminary plan as part of that. So between now and then, we're trying to get that worked out with where that street's going to go with the both adjacent property owners, so.
It wouldn't necessarily change the boundaries of the rezone, would it? If, it, it would just, we would just need to maybe show that there would have to be a dedication of forty feet, let's say, on the western edge of that property, potentially?
It's not going to change at all because it's going to get zoned this way, and then when they come back and plat, that's when you actually take the right-of-way. So we zone all the way up to the property line, and then when they come back and plat, that's when that right-of-way will take away the zoning district and it'll become public right-of-way, so.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to hear, make sure we have some resolution to this by the second reading and the subdivision, because I, I, I wouldn't want to have the case where somebody, and I don't think Brady would, you know, try to do, do that, but where you would have something where essentially the adjacent landowner is, when they bring it in, is stuck dedicating all eighty feet of their right-of-way when it's usually a shared cost.
You are correct, it's usually shared, and like I said, we kind of, engineering's aware of it, and we're trying to work that out between the two developers and, and see why it was shown that way, or if we can show it the way that is typically done, so.
Would, would a subdivision plan potentially be modified, or we might see an amended? I, I don't know what the subdivision plan looks like. I'd have to look at the planning commission.
The preliminary plan, we could show, they would resubmit it then, or as part of the D.E.P.s with that, because the access point's not going to change, just those internal streets would change. So if we can get that worked out as part of the second reading in November, then we would show it up here and, and move forward with that as kind of our approved plan by you guys, so.
Okay, well, keep us updated, thanks.
Counsel Brecky.
So is it possible to remit, to just amend the zoning exhibit?
This isn't part of the zoning exhibit. We don't need to amend it because it's still going to be zoned that way, no matter if the street gets, um, moved or not, because we're going to come back and, and actually plat the right-of-way out of that zoning.
Okay.
So the zoning's correct. It's just, it's more discussion on the preliminary plan, as you brought up, for next time to be able to get that worked out between Brady and then the adjacent property owner.
So we're going to fix it between now and the next reading.
We're going to work on a solution before November, I think it's second, third, somewhere in there. Yep, correct.
Other questions for Jason? All right, then, entertaining motion for, uh, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November two.
So moved, Erickson.
Second, Brecky.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Brecky on that. Discussion here, counsel? All right, let's vote, please.
Council members, Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item thirty-seven, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located seven twenty-five East Twenty-eighth Street from the R.R. Single Family Residential Suburban District to the R.T.-one Single Family Residential Traditional District, number one five one zero six dash twenty twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November second, twenty twenty-one. Private applicant, David Donahoe.
The applicant and owner here is David Donahoe. It's located at seven twenty-five East Twenty-eighth Street, just west of the cemetery. It's about point one three acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the gentleman's house had burned down, and so he's looking at just constructing a single-family house on the lot, and it's less than fifty feet wide.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Counselors, you got any questions?
Move approval?
Second, Brecky.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Brecky to set a date of second reading for November two. Any discussion on that motion? All right, let's vote, please.
Council members, Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item thirty-eight, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at eight hundred South Sycamore Avenue from the R.A.-one Apartment Residential Low Density District to the R.T.-two Town Home Residential Traditional District, number one five one zero seven dash twenty twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November second, twenty twenty-one. Private applicant, A.H.S. Incorporated, Brent Tucker.
The applicant and owner is Affordable Housing Solutions. So it's located south of East Arrowhead Parkway and east of South Sycamore Avenue. It's about point six seven acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking at finishing phase two of the Field of Dreams project with townhomes that will be constructed, and these will be for sale, a little bit different than what they did for phase one, so.
Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, any questions here? Counsel Nitzer, go ahead.
So, these are going to be townhomes?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll make sure the walls are
Yep, that's the struggle they had with phase one, so we've been working with them to get a way to do phase two and still be able to, uh, sell them and do kind of what they tried to do on phase one, so. They struggled with condos, selling condos to people.
Yeah, I, I bet.
Doesn't work very well, so. Yeah, this should alleviate that and be able to get as many units on there as they can, so.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions for Jason, counsel? Counsel Starr?
Yeah, more of a comment. I think Counselor Nitzer, remember, we changed the fire code last week, so that, uh, solves some of the problems as well, too, with the wall structures, so that'll make it a little easier for them to, uh, meet the, the new fire code.
All right, any other questions for Jason? Look for a motion, please, and that motion will be decided at a second reading for Tuesday, November two.
Move to approve.
Second, Jensen.
Okay, motion by Kylie, seconded by Jensen on that. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members, Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item thirty-nine, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located five thirty North Cliff Avenue from the O. Office District to the R.T.-one Single Family Residential Traditional District, number one five one one five dash twenty twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation set a date of second, of second reading for Tuesday, November second, twenty twenty-one. Private applicant, Southeast Development Foundation, Lynn Keller Forbes.
The applicant and owner here is C.C.O.G. It's at five thirty North Cliff Avenue. It's about point one two acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is there's already an existing single-family home on the property that's been in disrepair. C.C.O.G. did acquire that. They're looking to go in there and pretty much gut it and fix it up, and then they would also like to, uh, construct an attached garage on the west side of the, the house.
Anyone from the public here to speak on this one? Counsel, any questions for Jason tonight?
Move to approve. Second, Erickson.
All right, motion by Brecky. Seconded by Erickson to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November two. Any discussion on that? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members, Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item forty, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located nine thousand nine East Fifty-seventh Street from the A.G. Agriculture District, the R.R. Single Family Residential Rural District, number one five one one seven dash twenty twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November second, twenty twenty-one. Private applicant, Todd Porter.
The applicant here is Todd Porter. Uh, it's located east of South Six Mile Road and south of East Fifty-seventh Street. It's about fifteen point two three acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking to subdivide this lot into two, uh, single-family lots and then purchase, or then, uh, construct two homes on this in the future.
Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Counsel, got any questions for Jason? Counsel Nitzer, go ahead.
I don't, at R.R. Res, at the rural residential, you have to remind me, is that just have very large setbacks and lot sizes?
Yeah, yeah, lots over an acre, and then larger setbacks, thirty-foot fronts, and I think seven on the sides and thirty in the rear, so.
Oh, so it's kind of like R.R. was in the old ordinance.
The old, yep.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Other questions for Jason here? All right, look for a motion to set a date of reading for Tuesday, November two.
So moved, Nitzer.
Second Kylie.
All right, motion by Nitzer, seconded by Kylie, and, uh, I misstated that, to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November two. Any discussion on that motion? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members, Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item forty-one, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located seven oh five South Blauvelt Avenue from the I-one Light Industrial, R.D.-two Town Home Residential Suburban, and R.R. Single Family Residential Suburban Districts to the C.N. Conservation District, number one five one two zero dash twenty twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November second, twenty twenty-one. Private applicant, Iron Fox Farm, Daniel Boz.
The applicant here is Daniel Vox. It's located at seven oh five South Blauvelt Avenue. It's just under an acre in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing a neighborhood garden, kind of a teaching garden. These lots that are left here are a little bit challenging to develop. I know Lifescape was looking at it at one point to develop one of the community residential homes. Couldn't make it work by the topography, so this is really about all you can really utilize it for, so.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Counsel, you have any questions for Jason here?
Move approval?
Second Jensen.
Okay, motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to set a second reading for Tuesday, November two. Any discussion on that motion? All right, we'll vote, please.
Council members, Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item forty-two, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located three oh four North Spring Avenue from the R.A.-one Apartment Residential Low Density District to the R.T.-one Single Family Residential Traditional District, number one five one two six dash twenty twenty-one, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November second, twenty twenty-one. Private applicant, Discovery Realty Group, Destiny Marshall.
The applicant and owner here is Destiny Marshall. It's located north of West Seventh Street and west of North Minnesota Avenue. It's about point zero six acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing a single-family house on a, on a parcel that's less than five thousand square feet.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one? Counselors, any questions here? All right, look for a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November two.
Move to approve.
Second Jensen.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Jensen. Any questions or discussion there? All right, let's vote, please.
Council members, Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item forty-three, please.
Item forty-three, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending chapter one fifty, buildings, subchapter vacant buildings. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, November ninth, twenty twenty-one. Sponsors, council members, Sale and Erickson.
Uh, who's going to introduce this item? Counsel Sale?
I'd like to have him lead off, and then we'll dovetail on.
All right, Matt Tobias is here.
Good evening, Councilman Matt Tobias, uh, Planning and Development Services. Just real quick, just want to go through this. It's a vacant building, our fees. We're looking to change the fee amount right now. Currently, we sit at two hundred dollars per calendar year for a vacant building registration. We're looking to increase that fee from two hundred up to a thousand for homes located within city limits of Sioux Falls, and then also homes that are vacant buildings that are located within a historic district. We're looking to increase that to two thousand dollars, so.
All right, thank you, Matt. Counsel Sale, you want to further speak to this proposal?
Add a little bit to that. This is, this is the first reading, and, and what we've done is we've worked with these to try and get our fees up. Jim David is going to show us a few of the pictures, examples. We have approximately fifty on the registry today, and that doesn't, there's a lot that are not on the registry. I think it behooves us to try and get these places back into shape and let people either buy them or rent them and put people in homes. So this is a first reading. I will inform the council that at second reading, I will bring an amendment to this to significantly increase the fees. I've reached out to Danny Brown to tell me how far we can go before we get into any kind of trouble. Personally, I would like to see the fees go a lot higher, and I look forward to the discussion we are going to have as council members between now and then. So I'd like you to go ahead and vote it, so we can do it on November ninth. Thank you.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak to this item tonight? All right, Counsel Erickson, I'm going to give you the floor as well on this.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to add a little bit on to Counsel Sale. You know, as you see in these pictures, um, generally these fall in that affordable home type range. Oftentimes what happened, uh, folks either just let it sit in disrepair until it falls apart because they don't want to uphold the historic value that maybe it's on the registry, or they may not have the funds, it's bank-owned, whatever it is, but it does pose a threat to other neighbors with having potential squatters, um, people breaking in, animals, you name it. And so if we can get these make, make it hurt a little bit, so to speak, to, to get them up to, to speed, I think that's, um, going to add additional value and give people a place to live. I think that the city has done an excellent job of trying to work with these folks over the years, and they've chosen to let them sit. And so our hope is that this will, um, maybe incentivize them a little bit to, uh, fix them up before it's too late and they have to pay the hefty fines.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Uh, let's get a motion on the floor, and then we can go into some discussion.
Move to approve, Brecky.
Second, set a second reading in November ninth.
All right, so we have motion by Brecky, seconded by Sale to set a date of second reading for do you want to set it for November second or November ninth?
November ninth, please.
November ninth, all right, for November ninth. All right, discussion on that. Counsel Brecky, go ahead.
I was just going to add, I, I've been aware of this problem, too, and I, um, I think this is a good idea. I don't think they have enough tools. Our code enforcement people struggle with this exact problem. They don't have enough tools in their tool belt to entice or prod a property owner into, yeah, either sell it, fix it up, you know, or, or rent it out, but do something. And if they can't, then they always have the option to sell, so it just, um, it, it, this allowing them to set their, um, on, you know, for years and years at a time is just, is, is really, I think, painful to the neighborhood, so. I would also, you know, suggest that the council and our code enforcement put your, our heads together. Are there other things in addition to this, um, that we could do to further incentivize some movement, some action of some sort on these kinds of things? Because I know there are eyesores in the, in the neighborhood. I know there's huge pressure on the code enforcement people, and, and a, a lot of anger vented at the code enforcement people, but I think this is a good start because there's, what, what the code enforcement people really need is more tools. And I know we've talked about neighborhood revitalization and infill and possibility of purchasing things like this. So I think this is a good start. Um, I'd like to encourage us, council and team with code enforcement together to look at other things, you know, that actually move these things along, so, thank you.
Other discussion on this item, counsel? Counsel Kylie, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Um, I would, uh, state right off the bat that I would support a significant increase in Counselor Sale and, and Jensen or Erickson. I'm assuming you're talking in a significant increase over what was presented as one thousand and two thousand. I would wholeheartedly support that because not only are these an eyesore, but, uh, they affect surrounding property values, and simply you're not being a good neighbor. I mean, you, the owners probably would not want their own property next door to their primary place of residence, so why should others have to put up with that? It's, uh, it's a public safety issue, uh, it's a health issue, so therefore, again, I would support a significant increase over what was proposed this evening. Thank you. Uh, it's, uh, it's a public safety issue, uh, it's a health issue, so therefore, again, I would support a significant increase over what was proposed this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion here, council? All right, then we'll vote on the motion to, uh, send this to a second reading on November nine.
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. Item forty-four, please.
Item forty-four, a resolution authorizing an application for financial assistance, authorizing the execution and submittal of the applications and designating an authorized representative to certify and sign payment requests. Sponsors, the mayor.
Good evening, Mark.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we'll first give you a, an update on the water reclamation project and then, um, ask for your support in making application for the funding that will, uh, ultimately constrain the project so we can go to bid. Um, so first, um, you know, again, with it being a regional facility, the goals of the project are to increase the capacity of the plant by fifty percent from twenty-one million gallons per day up to thirty. Uh, and that was all predicated by the governance that we set, uh, years ago that when we reached seventy-five percent of the plant's capacity, we should be under study to understand, uh, most efficient way to expand the plant and by ninety percent capacity, we should be under construction. And so that process started back in twenty sixteen. Um, we completed the study in twenty eighteen and then ultimately initiated, uh, design and we're here tonight. We've, um, certainly, the world has changed since twenty eighteen, since we had, uh, established that initial number of a hundred and fifty-nine million. We've seen significant, um, workforce cost escalation, commodity cost escalation, and then just true design progression that, um, we've reached this point. And so, uh, just to frame up the, uh, current cost estimate of the facility, and this is inclusive of hard and soft costs, uh, the new, uh, number is two hundred and four million eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Um, and our constrained funding that we had was a hundred and fifty-nine million dollars in SRF funding and then recently you supported us with an additional six point eight million dollars from the city's ARPA funds. So we're working to close a gap of about thirty-nine million dollars, thirty, thirty-nine million dollars, thirty-eight thousand. Uh, the key for us to do that is we've got one significant project that we've done an analysis that we can delay by two years. Um, it's a, it's increased capacity on the east side. Ryan's ran the numbers with our consultants and we just need to essentially have that project online by twenty twenty-five. And so in short term, for us to constrain the project, uh, one of the key pieces is to transfer essentially that loan that we were going to take out on pump station two forty and slide it into the plant project. Uh, we think it's imperative that we, uh, get the plant funded, get it bid out so we can, uh, mitigate that risk and then ultimately, um, as we all know, we've been working with the state on their significant funds that they have with ARPA funds that we hopefully can be successful, um, in either getting principal forgiveness or grant that would kinda make us whole, if you will, with that east side project. So tonight, what we're asking you for is to give us your support in making application for loan three and four. Um, so our loan three was, uh, essentially at one time was just gonna be eighty-seven point five million with pulling the pump station two forty loan over, uh, that now that loan three would go up to a hundred and twenty-three million. We'll also make application for loan four, uh, which is just about eleven, um, just over eleven million dollars. And then where you'll see us back is in November, we'll bring bond council in and actually do the actual ordinances for loan three, which is the hundred and twenty-three, uh, million dollars, so. It's a lot of numbers, um, if there's anything I can do to answer, uh, questions, but again, tonight is simply to make application for this, um, very, um, good program that we have with the state, the SRF, uh, funding, uh, process. One last, uh, slide, give you an update on schedule. We kicked off the design in twenty nineteen. Um, we'll reach, uh, ninety percent design documents in November twenty-one and we'd like to begin construction in early twenty-two. Any questions you have, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone from the public question to speak to item forty-four here? All right, council, questions for Mark or Ryan? All right, look for a motion, please.
Move to approve.
Second, Selberg.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Selberg to approve item forty-four, discussion, council. All right, hearing none, let's vote on this, please.
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
All right, that one passes eight to zero. Item forty-five.
Item forty-five, a resolution in support of the American Rescue Plan funding request made by the Lewis and Clark Regional Water System for its, for its expansion to sixty million gallons per day. State of South Dakota, sponsor, mayor.
Hey, Ryan.
Good afternoon, Ryan Johnson, city of Sioux Falls. Uh, next, this presentation will cover the next two items, forty-five and forty-six and, uh, as, as stated, it's a request for funding to support the expansion of Lewis and Clark system. Uh, discussion started actually last year to expand Lewis and Clark from forty-four point nine million gallons to, uh, sixty million gallons. These were planned improvements that were going to be completed at some point in the future and primarily the discussion was accelerated due to the drought, which significantly increased the needs for the Lewis and Clark members. Uh, as of September twentieth, the cost, uh, estimate for the expansion was at ninety-seven point three million dollars. As, as we've heard throughout the last couple of years, price accelerations due to worker shortages and commodity prices and, uh, so on, the price tag is now being estimated closer to a hundred and seventeen million dollars. Uh, unlike the construction of the original forty-four point one million gallon per day base system, there is no federal funds that are associated with this project and in one hundred percent the responsibility of the twenty members that are a part of the Lewis and Clark, uh, system. Uh, to pay for this, Lewis and Clark member identifies and supports in their programs to, uh, reimburse that, that, uh, hundred and seventeen million dollar price tag. So in addition to the cost of the Lewis and Clark's expansion, the economic difficulties have been exacerbated due to COVID pandemic inflation resulting in additional hardship for regional members to shoulder, uh, the burden of that fifteen point eight one million gallon expansion. As a result, Lewis and Clark is applied to multiple states and counties for the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funding. Lewis and Clark is outlined in the request to the state of South Dakota in estimated forty-three point seven million dollars in construction that can be awarded at the end of twenty twenty-four and completed by the end of twenty-six. Uh, whatever ARPA funding is available, it was approved by South Dakota, will help offset that expansion cost. The approval of the resolution of support enables Sioux Falls and other Lewis and Clark members to request critical financial assistance in securing the present and future water needs of the member communities. With that, be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thanks, Ryan. Anyone from the public here to speak on item forty-five? Council, any questions on this, uh, resolution? All right, look for a motion.
So move, approve.
Second, Brecky.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Counselor Brecky to approve item forty-five. Any discussion on that, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Nitzer, go ahead.
Uh, this is purely commentary and it relates to the last two items. One has to appreciate the irony that, and again, this is just commentary, that the federal government drops money from helicopters, thus driving up the cost of labor, materials, so we're gonna have cost overruns on these projects, which therefore means that local governments like ours are gonna have to use or beg for ARPA money to cover those overruns. So it's, it's interesting.
Other discussion, council, on this? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote on that motion to approve, please.
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
All right, that passes item forty-six.
Item forty-six, a resolution in support of the American Rescue Plan funding request made by the Lewis and Clark Regional Water System for its expansion to sixty million gallons per day. State of Iowa, sponsors, the mayor.
It's a companion item, correct, Ryan?
Same presentation, different say, with the request to support because they are member communities of Lewis and Clark. The hope is that we, we help each other out and raise those funds to support that expansion.
Sounds good. Anyone from the public here to speak on forty-six? Counselors, any questions for Ryan here?
Move approval.
Second, Brecky.
Mike, come on up. We went through public input quick and missed you, so.
I just gotta agree with Greg on this one, I mean, it's one of those situations where I don't feel like we need to get federal government involved in this. I think we can come up with other ways, like borrowing money, like, like borrowing from state revolving funds. I think, kinda like I, where I spoke on a couple of weeks ago, I think we should stay away from taking federal money as much as possible, not knowing what type of regulations and codes they're gonna put on us, but I just wanna say I agree with Greg, Greg on that situation. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mike. All right, we have a motion by Selberg, seconded by Brecky to approve this item. Is there discussion on the council on this? All right, hearing none, let's vote on it, please.
Council members, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item forty-seven?
Item forty-seven, a resolution discontinuing the use of certain property of the city as any parking lot or area or off, off-street parking facility, sponsors, the mayor.
Good evening, Dustin.
Good evening, council. Dustin Powers with the Planning and Development Services Department. Uh, over the past year or more, we've been in conversations with you about, uh, possibly the redevelopment and purchase and sale of a couple of our surface parking lots in downtown Sioux Falls. Um, so the two items on your agenda tonight are related to four hundred South First Avenue, uh, and the parking lots there. So what I wanted to do is kinda summarize a few of the conversations we've had over the past year, um, related to how we've kinda come about, uh, looking at the surface parking lots that we have and, and identifying the ones for possible redevelopment. Uh, so we have three documents that have been used, uh, really in the past and, and to date to provide guidance on assisting with this, uh, stimulating economic development in downtown. Uh, those three documents are on the screen. The first on the very right-hand side is the Sioux Falls Downtown Market Study, which was completed by Progressive Urban Management Associates and Arland Land Use Economics, uh, in twenty fourteen to project future growth of downtown Sioux Falls and the uses we would see. Uh, the second document in the middle is a, a Walker study, uh, from Walker Parking Consultants and was a parking demand and site planning analysis study, also completed in twenty fourteen. And then also, uh, on the left-hand side is our twenty twenty-five downtown plan, which really, uh, consolidated, um, information from about a year's worth of public engagement and looked at the growth projections that were in the market study and then ultimately the projections that were, um, from those, uh, growth, from the growth projections of the market study, how the Walker study projected what parking needs that we would need if we were to see that type of growth. Uh, so when we look at, uh, really how the market study, what the market study laid out, the market study laid out that we would, in the next twenty years, see a million square feet of growth in office space. We'd see a hundred and ninety thousand square feet of growth in commercial retail space and we would see a growth of nineteen hundred, uh, residential units in our downtown. Uh, the Walker Parking Study took those numbers and said, well, if you were gonna grow that much over the next twenty years, what you'll need to accommodate for parking, if we look at our current parking supply, which would have been in twenty fourteen when the studies were done, what is our current surplus then and then based on this growth, based on the surplus and what we would need in the future for new parking stalls? What it said was that we would need to accommodate all of that growth in the market study, uh, we would need to accommodate twenty-one hundred new parking stalls in downtown Sioux Falls. And again, that would be a, an effort between not only the public parking system, but the private parking system to support the, the development of those uses. So what we've done on the screen here is really just taken the numbers, uh, that we started with, so the Walker Parking Study being, and all of these studies really being completed in twenty fourteen. We looked at what developments have occurred since then and have we met the expectations of growth, um, not only for private use and office, retail and residential, but are we meeting the expectations that were laid out and related, related to parking? Uh, so when we look at these fifteen projects that are listed that have occurred in downtown that have had any significant impact on parking, uh, whether that be positive or negative in downtown Sioux Falls, we can see that of these fifteen parking, or fifteen projects, uh, over thirty-seven hundred new parking stalls have been developed, which is a net gain of twenty-five hundred parking stalls. I will note that the bottom two projects that do actually contribute to a lot of the office, retail and residential of the, of the projects on the list are also projects that are just now starting. So again, uh, we are looking at these because they are future projects that are coming online and so they will impact kinda the decisions we make as we look at the surface parking lots that we have. So when we look at these numbers and, and knowing that the market study said we would grow by this amount, the Walker Study saying that we would need a net gain of twenty-one hundred stalls, what we can see here is that we are keeping up pace with providing parking in downtown Sioux Falls as developments occurring. And so, um, what I wanted to move forward to is then how we decided what lots we were gonna release. So we took those numbers into consideration when we were evaluating which parking lots would be potential options for development and, and be a good redevelopment opportunity. Uh, we also looked at all of our surface lots and we said, if, if we are gonna make this lot developable in the future, where would we put our existing customers that park there today? So when we look at the four hundred South First Avenue lot, uh, where we're located here again is at, uh, the corner of Twelfth Street and First Avenue, just south of the Ace Hardware Store. We said, where would we park the fifty people, fifty parking stalls that park there today? Um, and we looked in the area and if we look in a one-block radius, we can look to the north one block and there would be our First Avenue parking ramp. If we look one block to the west through the Twelfth Street Plaza, we would see the pavilion parking ramp. And if we were to look one block to the south, we would see a surface parking lot where, uh, adjacent to the shrine, all of which have, uh, ability to accommodate future parkers. So, uh, the occupancy of those, uh, parking structures or lots do have, uh, availability and we could easily move those customers and not lose them, but move them and keep them in our system. So when we, uh, also looked at these lots, we also wanted to understand, you know, when we think about our twenty twenty-five downtown plan, some of the things that it calls out is, is really looking at the highest and best use for our property. And what that entails is, is not necessarily a surface parking lot, but how can we create more density, more connectivity and walkability? And one way to do that is create opportunities for development. Uh, so when we looked at, uh, all of the lots that we were looking at, we wanted to come up with some objectives that they all needed to achieve. So when we look at four hundred South First Avenue here, we wanted to, um, put the property out there with some goals. And so what we created as the goals was we wanted a development that would, uh, create a mixed-use, uh, development that encourages density. We wanted to be able to leverage our city property to encourage increased density on neighboring adjacent sites. Uh, we wanted to promote connectivity and walkability and we wanted to promote all of the remaining goals of the downtown, twenty twenty-five downtown plan. So we did release these lots, as you're aware. Uh, we did receive three proposals that were submitted to the city for review. Um, and based on the goals that I just outlined, uh, we're excited to say that, uh, we have selected one to bring forward to you, uh, that did meet all of the objectives that we placed out there on the, uh, release of this surface parking lot. And that is a project that's a partnership between Greenacre Development and Lloyd Companies. Uh, the project would provide a four-story building that would provide at least a hundred and fifty residential units as well as five thousand square feet of retail space at the corner of, again, Twelfth Street and First Avenue. Uh, this is being able to be achieved by the developer's ability, uh, to negotiate, uh, a contract with the neighboring property owners and would be subject to a future purchase agreement that we would bring forward to you following, uh, uh, subject approval of tonight's agenda items. So again, this project provided the greatest amount of density and units that we were looking for, but also leveraged our site to, uh, acquire under contract the adjoining properties to create the scale of development that you're seeing in front of you. So on tonight's agenda, in order to move forward to final negotiations and actually bringing forward a purchase agreement, uh, this is a little bit different. It's a parking lot, uh, some of the land that we typically sell, uh, like rail yard property or some of the land along, uh, Phillips Avenue and, uh, Uptown that we've sold in the past years didn't really have any ties to anything. We weren't using it for anything other than redevelopment. Uh, this lot has been used in the past for obviously our public parking system and as required by codified law, we would need a resolution that's on your agenda tonight, pass to basically discontinue the use of that as parking, uh, for the municipality. And so that is the first item on your agenda. What we would do is, uh, approval tonight would make the discontinuance of the use of the parking subject to a purchase agreement and a future date that would be established for closing. So again, we wouldn't necessarily discontinue use today, um, or in twenty days. It would be subject to a purchase agreement that would ultimately be brought forward. And if a closing date was established, then a date would be established of when, uh, the city would stop usage of that, uh, facility, but this does give us the indication that we can move forward with a purchase agreement. The second item, uh, on your, uh, item forty-eight is a motion to surplus the property, which again is a requirement of codified law for us to surplus the property before we can enter into and, and pass a, uh, purchase agreement, uh, for the sale of the property. So for us to continue negotiations with the development, uh, that, uh, is on the screen, uh, we do need, uh, your support for the, these two items here tonight. Um, I do have, uh, uh, representatives of the parking, uh, Jeff is here with the planning department, uh, and we do have representatives of the development here if there are any questions related to the next two items.
All right, thank you, Dustin. Anyone from the public would like to speak to this item tonight? Come on up.
Sioux Falls. I just, I just gotta remind, I think it was like five years ago when we start, when we built the parking ramp on, the brand-new parking ramp, I think it was one of those deals under Mayor Hoover where we kinda promised as a city, we went and, I think, I think Teresa brought it up at the time, that we weren't gonna sell parking ramps. I kinda chit, chit, chat with, with a little bit that, uh, at some point we probably will, but I do, I just think this is where those times were, I think, back then, I think, I wish the, the city would have been a little bit more honest with, with the, with the people that were, they, they, I think, I, I think we all knew we were gonna sell the parking Does that go towards the parking facility, pay off the, pay off the bonds, et cetera, et cetera? So I just thought I'd just throw that in there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Dan Johnson, Mayor Council. As a member of the Downtown Public Parking Advisory Board, actually, I'm the vice chair, been on the board five and a half years, and it's, I actually enjoy it. And the Public Parking Advisory Board, we've met a couple of times the last two or three weeks, and we took a vote, and the city, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Powers have done a fabulous job informing us, giving us everything we needed to know. And the Public Advisory Board recommend to the city council that we move forward with this motion.
All right. Questions for the... We may. We'll call you up. We need you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for serving on our volunteer board. I appreciate that. Other folks here for public to put on this item tonight? All right. Let's move any questions for staff. We've got several members of staff here that could speak to any questions that may exist out there. Questions? Counsel Star?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I guess Mr. Ziderich asked a good question. What does happen to the funds when we sell and what's the property appraised at? How much would it involve? Does it just go into the enterprise fund?
Yes, so the, the parking lot is a product of the, or asset of the enterprise fund. So if they were to sell the property, the funds would go into the enterprise fund. We do have an initial appraisal that we did back summer, end of summer of last year, that came in at $502,000 or $25 a square foot. We are in the process of acquiring an update to that, just to confirm appraised price.
Have we, if I can, Mr. Mayor? Have we talked to the customers in the area? I know that's probably, when I drive by there, I see people coming and going from the federal courthouse, probably as the primary folks, and how does that, when you take away the spots, how does that, where do we replace them and how do we, you know, make sure there's enough parking for the existing businesses as well as new?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll have Matt come up on just any communications that have occurred. As I discussed, there, we do have the ability and the availability of parking stalls in those three other locations within a block radius. So when we look at the existing customers that are there, they're kind of scattered out, you know, kind of around that area. So, you know, walking one block in one direction versus where they walk today isn't a, isn't a major deterrent for that. So we would be looking at, basically keeping all of the customers we have today while also selling the property and getting the value of the property.
Matt, you want to, you want to come up and speak to Counsel Star's question?
Matt Nelson, Public Parking Facilities Manager. So first to answer us for his notification and communications, this was communicated initially when the process started. So when this was posted online quite some time ago, and when customers come in after their new leases, we tell them, hey, just so you know, there's a process going on where this lot could go away. It's a very small percentage of our overall parkers. We have currently 34 leases in that lot. Typically, it runs on an average of about 70% leased, which is about 35 customers. Total 50 spaces there. I think I've seen it fully leased for about two years out of the last decade. So it kind of goes up and down with how many customers are there. Most of the customers are on the 300 and 400 blocks of Phillips Avenue. If they relocated to the Pavilion Ramp, they would actually be closer to their business. This lot is a little less expensive than the Pavilion Ramp, but not significantly. And then we've got probably a few just individual customers right around that lot that would, and they would move to either the Shrine Lot, the First Avenue Ramp, or the Pavilion Ramp, or within two blocks. This still puts pretty much all of our customers in that two-block radius when we measure walkability or acceptable walking distance. Two blocks is considered A to B-level parking, so it is a high-quality parking for outdoor conditions when you're walking. So when we relocate them, it is, it's not like we're pushing them four or five blocks out. What we're doing is putting them in what we would consider acceptable by industry standards.
Thank you.
Other questions tonight, counsel, for any city staff members that are here? All right, look for a motion then to approve item 47.
Move Approval Jensen.
Wait a second.
Second Selberg.
Okay, motion by Jensen, seconded by Counselor Selberg. All right, any discussion, counsel, on this? Counselor Seale, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know a lot of you have probably heard me say from time to time, it's not how you start, it's how you finish. I don't think this project was started very well, and I have asked more questions again and again and again to try and understand how it's happened and where we've come from so many different people and then city government and outside of city government to get to where we're at with this project today. I will say that I am uncomfortable with a lot of the things that are, that are down here on South First Avenue and the way it's come about, but some people say that might just be because of much too, too much bean soup that have an upset stomach. But we are where we're at today, and I appreciate the hard work that people in Planning Development and the City Attorney's Office and other people have done to educate me. When I look at the hard data between the Walker study and between the 2025 plan down there, I can come to a conclusion that this is probably the right thing to do. I can't say that in all certainty that it's the right thing to do, but I can say I'm probably leaning more than 51% in voting in favor of it. I wasn't there three weeks ago. I certainly was not there three months ago. But today we are where we're at, so it might surprise a lot of people to hear that I am going to vote in favor of this to go forward. And I would encourage you all to do that. And I would also encourage all the city councilors that are here to never stop asking questions because this administration, even though they might think I'm a pest on this, they continue to answer my questions respectfully about how they got there and what we're going to do and what my concerns were. So I appreciate that, and I apologize for being a pest, but I am going to vote to support this project, and I would hope you all do the same. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Erickson.
Thank you. I think I was a pest right along with you, so I maybe followed your lead a little more. It's been a long time. I appreciate the presentation tonight. I know that we've been pretty hard on you all over the last several months, but with that came, I think, some good change. We've seen the Parking Advisory Board being revitalized and meeting more frequently. It's full, which is great, and it doesn't have to be with just people downtown. You know, the, the pretty picture in front of us, I think, looks amazing. Truly, for me, in the beginning, I, I really knew the highest and best use was not surface lots. That was never an issue for me. It was how we got there and how it was presented, and not, not against any one particular person, just how we got here. It just took me a while to get here. And so I think that this will be a great project. I think that we have a couple more steps to make to ensure that the processes were all followed correctly, and I know those conversations have been going on. So I'm excited to see this. You know, when we talk about parking, it's always so emotional for many reasons. But, you know, if you, if you were to go to the mall and park, you'd walk miles, and a lot of people do just go to the mall to walk miles. It's what you do. And so, you know, in South Dakota, we like to pull up outside and walk right in, and there is plenty of parking in this area for this. I think you've demonstrated that these spots will be absorbed and we'll end up having a pretty darn cool project there for generations to come. So thanks for your patience with all of us. It's taken us a while, but sometimes it takes longer than others for some, so thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Other discussion on the council on this item? Counsel Breckie?
I'm going to ditto what my two previous council members said. You know, I'm trying to, to not be upset about how it got here and try to view where we're at on the merits of the project itself, but I do want to say on a go-forward basis, I think that there is a better way to get here, and I think if you would just liken it to a few weeks ago when we passed a resolution for condemnation. We passed a resolution for condemnation, and that allowed, that gave permission to the City Attorney's Office to start a lawsuit and to continue to negotiate and maybe get, get rid of it before and during and after, and then ultimately, if they can't, then they'll have a lawsuit. This, these two, this motion and these, this resolution should have been done well in advance of any solicitation for projects because this is the policy discussion we need to have alone without a project on the table about whether or not now is the appropriate time to sell off this particular surface parking lot. If we have more of these in the future, I think there needs to be a gap, you know, allow us to have that policy discussion, that public discussion with the people, is this what we want to do with public input? Is this what the people want us to do? And then we're giving you permission to, okay, have at it and go out and get your project, and I think we'll be far more receptive because we will have had a chance to have that policy discussion in open and get that public piece taken care of. You know, having said that, then I, again, I look at where we are because we're, we did it all together, I think that's part of people's discomfort. But, you know, the reference to the 2025 Downtown Plan, for me, there's another issue about, you know, the highest and best use. You know, we want to get the highest and best use. I would say the other part of the debate is the highest and best use versus the highest value. If we wait and fill in, be one of the last pieces to fill in downtown, could we possibly get more value and do a more needed project for that time, more strategic, to benefit, you know, the public's coffers for a very valuable piece of property if we let more development occur on its own before the city let out in the development? And so I wrestled with that. Do we have the city lead out and try to help stimulate it, or is there enough stimulation going on right now that the city should be sitting back and going, wait, what do we want to save this perfect piece of property for, and when do we, would be the perfect time for us to sell it? So it's like sell early or sell late. So that is part of the debate for me. I'm, I'm still, you know, wanting to listen tonight. I'm inclined on this one to go forward because it is such a good project. I know there are two more on the table. I really want to see us have the discussion about whether we want to go forward before you start soliciting people and putting that kind of pressure on us in the future. But for this one, of the three that are, are being discussed, I have the least concern about doing this one now, so I probably will support this.
Great, thank you. Counsel Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Counselor Seale makes a great point, never stop asking questions, and a lot of good ones, and I know a number of councilors asked a lot of good questions on this and really tore into this subject. I learned a lot about it, a lot from them on that. Good questions have been asked, due diligence has been done on, you know, on highest and best use. I appreciate the time that was taken by the folks that presented this project to me and kind of walked me through this and what we were up to. And I appreciate the work of the Parking Advisory Board and the work that they have done. And as I think Counsel Erickson had said too, they've kind of, not that they haven't been engaged, but really got involved in this and have been fired up on some of this stuff too. So I appreciate, again, a lot of the questions, the due diligence, where we've come from. I do think it'll be a good project, and I will support it. Thank you.
Counsel Star?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think where, what was interesting is, is that we've gone from an RFP process to a negotiated sale, which has really turned over a lot of the process to the administration where we would have normally seen it in the past. And, and I think the RFP process might, you know, looking at this be a little better way of doing it because it opens it up a little bit more to the public. But like most things, change is hard, and looking at new ways maybe is a better way of doing it. Again, I think the negotiated sale limits the, the amount of people or eliminates some of the access to, to developers to get a chance to be part of this process. I, I question whether we opened it up far enough. I don't know how much you could do. I think there's always people say, oh, we didn't know about it, or we didn't get to be part of it. And again, I think it's something that we as a council have to take a look at it, that i- if we're happy with making the switch from doing a request for proposals versus a negotiated sale. I think we, we were getting to a project that I think is going to be good and that'll, that'll be successful. It's just, it's government and sausage-making, and I'm not sure the sausage-making was as good as where we would have liked it as a group. So again, I think it's something we need to, to take a look at and as we move forward in all kinds of processes, whether we stick with the negotiated sale or RFP. We saw it with other properties downtown that people said they applied to be part of it and they're not part of the deal, and so, again, I think it's the, again, it's all about process and policy in this group, setting the policy of where we want to be and moving forward. So, thank you.
All right. Counsel Jensen, go ahead.
Yeah, real quick, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I look at this project and thank, you know, Counsel Seale and Counsel Erickson, people that have been here a little longer than me for asking the, the questions and kind of bringing everyone along in, in the race here. To the, to the sale of these surface lots, and specifically this one, you look at what the surface lot is today, and what we're going to get out of this is a $28 million investment. That's what the concept plan says there on the, the drawing. What that means to me is housing, it equals density. We need density. The Director Cotter is always talking about how we need more density and that this is going to be helping to provide that. We need to, to work for our public safety tax dollars, our school tax dollars, our county tax dollars. This is really going to improve our educational system, our K-12 educational system, that we're going to rely on to educate our young people and hopefully to get those people working in our city and maybe in downtown, working and living in one of these apartments. And then you look at the improvement to the neighborhood. I mean, look at this drawing compared to the surface parking lot that's there. This is unbelievable opportunity for us. We might have gotten there in a way that wasn't desirable by all. We got there like Counselor Seale said at the beginning, and hopefully, you know, wrapping this up and doing it, you know, the way that people want it presented. So I appreciate this project and look forward to supporting it.
All right, thank you, Counsel. Any other discussion on this, this item? All right, we've got a motion, a second on the floor, then let's take a vote on it, please.
Councilmembers, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Seale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
All right, that item passes eight to zero. Move to item 48, please.
Item 48, motion to declare the following property to be surplus property that is no longer necessary useful or suitable for the purpose for which it was acquired, the west one-third of lots 11 and 12, except the east 10 feet thereof, and all lots 1 and 2, all in block 10 of Gale's addition to Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, according to the recorded plat thereof, sponsors the mayor.
Again, this is the same property we just discussed, just the second item on tonight's agenda.
All right, thanks, Dustin. Anyone from the public who wish to speak on item 48 here? Counselors, any questions for Dustin on this one? All right, look for a motion.
Move Approval Jensen.
Second Kylie.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Kylie to approve item 48. Discussion here, counsel. Counsel Seale, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to say that everything I said on the previous item goes for this item too. Thank you.
All right. Other discussion here, Counselor? Counsel Kylie?
And I just would, and I'd like to reiterate that we were told that there would be a reappraisal of this property now that it's going to officially be surplus. Correct?
Yes, we'll have a new appraisal before we bring a purchase agreement forward.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Dustin. Any other questions or discussion here, counsel? All right, let's take a vote on that, please.
Councilmembers, Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Seale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
All right, that item passes eight to zero. Any other new business tonight, counsel? All right, let's move general public input. Public input's three minutes per person and on items that we didn't talk about earlier in the night, so if you're here for public input, come on up.
Greetings. Hi, David Sokitis, and I'd like to talk about something that was on the consent agenda, but I did not hear a prompt for public input at that time, so I'd like to present my notes now, if that's okay. All right, so here we go. I'd like to talk about a law firm that you all want to hire. So agenda, in the consent item, item six, you were talking about hiring Woods Fuller Schultz and Smith. So one question we might ask is, why do you need a law firm? Somebody's suing the city, and who might be suing the city and why? Good questions to know. Now, I happen to have some experience with Woods, so I'd like to talk about my experience, and that'll make sense more towards the end of my talk. But anyway, I was shoveling dirt off the bike trail when I was illegally detained by four police officers, and we received a ticket for disobeying traffic control devices, but you can tell that the traffic control devices were not positioned to block traffic, hence the bogus ticket. One problem with the law firm is that they protect perjury, not what we want in an official So, um, when a police officer writes a bogus ticket, that's perjury because he swears that he's told the whole truth, and I wanted the judge to give the cop a hard time, but the law firm said, nah, that's not a good idea, and if you want more, more of a discourse on this, you can see a court case over there. It's all in the proceedings of the court case. Another problem with the law firm is they like to withhold evidence from the litigant, and that would be me. They introduced a motion to seal police and animal control records, but what can I do with sealed records? Not very much. It's not a problem. Another issue with the law firm is they like to misconstrue rulings and citations and laws. I didn't have time to give you the big list because I've only got 49 seconds left. So the underlying issue is that the law firm is overly interested in pride and victory, and the city kind of forgot about civil rights and working for citizens. So my recommendations are that you fire this law firm because they weren't very nice, and that you work more for truth, justice, and government for citizens. And of course, you know, you got to smile at something at the end, and this is the nice view of the arc of dreams. Have a good evening, everybody.
All right, thank you. Anyone else for general public input tonight?
Mike, again, from Sioux Falls. Just want to talk a little bit about the motor vehicle funds. I, I got to look at this a little bit more over the last years, been talking to Greg and Pat about it. I kind of know something, and when, when you look at the financial reports, you, you kind of see them as one light item under motor vehicle funds and wheel tax. I got to look, I got to think, why, why don't, why don't we separate that into three different light items, sort of from the state, the county, the two counties? I mean, I've been doing a lot of research on this. I mean, this is the, these are, this is the amount of money we get from Lincoln County. It's roughly, roughly, uh, 300, so far this year, we've got $340,000 so far, probably mostly, I think, bringing in about $700,000. Lincoln County kind of get, Lincoln County gives us roughly 57% of all the revenue they bring in from motor vehicle funds, which is kind of, you look at the next city, all there is 11%. And you got Lincoln, then you got Minnehaha County, it gives us, that's what they, we get from Minnehaha County, and then of course you got the Department of Revenue. You know, altogether, so far, we've, we've collected almost $2 million, $2 million a year. I think we're, we're going to come in right around $4 million. All, all this is kind of led me to kind of believe, I'd like to recommend this to this, to this body, you know, I'd like to recommend, uh, we talked about like amending the ordinances a little bit, to kind of restructure and how, how we accept, manage, and, and utilize them, these, these funds that, they're only $4, $3, $4 million a year, but I think if we, I'd like to give the, I'd like to have an ordinance where the council has a little more oversight over the funds. I just kind of, kind of drew up a little what I would like to see in a plan, like, kind of like to have like section, just kind of state where the funds are coming from, be more, be more, more transparent. And, and then section one, basically section one, my proposal would be just take, accepting the funds, put them in a special fund, a special fund earmarked public, public highways, hot streets and roads, kind of like a special fund. And then section two would basically have, I'd like to see the director of finance kind of be more, more in, more up mode of certifying how many miles of streets we have in Sioux Falls, kind of maximizing the, every dollar we can get from the state and counties. Section three, basically giving the city council more oversight over the funds, and section four, giving the mayor the ability to have a, a city, a city office, and then, of course, I'd like, I, what I really like to see, and like I talked to Pat about it a few times, I'd, I'd really like to see a public highway, street and bridge commission.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. Anybody else for general public input tonight?
Good evening. My name is Chad Bishop. I live at 7405 South Florencia Drive here in Sioux Falls. I concur with the councilors that asking questions of your government is good. I'm once again asking you to adopt a policy acknowledging the status of COVID-19 recovered persons in addition to the tracking of the voluntarily vaccinated to better calculate community immunity, and to do so by working in collaboration with the State Department of Health to do this through wide-scale antibody surveillance. Last Friday, Director of Medical Ethics at the University of California, Irvine, Dr. Aaron Cariotti, asked this question on Twitter. Someone fully vaccinated with the J and J vaccine is, per the data submitted to the FDA, 67% protected against infection, whereas those with natural immunity are 99% protected against reinfection. Why is the first group included and the second group excluded from the workplace? In previous statements, I have conveyed both the efficacy and the durability of natural immunity from credible studies and journals ranging from science to cell. We are now, now told by the CDC director that the fully vaccinated can both experience breakthrough cases and continue to transmit the D variant to others, while the Israeli data confirms this and informs us that the COVID-19 recovered are 13 times less likely to do so. If I understand the CDC director correctly, why are no exceptions being granted to the COVID-19 recovered? If they are least likely to become reinfected and thus the least likely to transmit, aren't they the safest to be around? If these mandates had been about following the science, how can this be? Perhaps if this had been about following the science, we would have spent the last 18 months actually addressing root cause of this, which is metabolic health in our population. While there is still suffering in South Dakota associated with the pandemic, much of the impetus for the mandates, both public and private, have come from the purported urgency of a constant imminent catastrophe. If the vaccines are effective, is this still true? If they are not effective, are the mandates warranted? Presenting here the CDC's most recent data for excess death calculations in South Dakota, do we still perceive a critical emergency that warrants destroying the livelihoods of our fellow citizens? Building upon the Israeli data, medical ethicist Dr. Cariotti mathematically evaluates the benefit versus risk for the COVID-19 recovered, and he shows his work. In short, to prevent one case of asymptomatic reinfection, we would cause over 75 cases of clinically significant adverse events. Where's the work of the federal executive? He may be wrong, but at least this is a starting point. We're at the point where the most vulnerable have been vaccinated or have had the opportunity to be vaccinated. We are now mandating the vaccination and violation of rights to protect those who will not protect themselves. Given all of this, one must ask, is it unethical to require vaccination of the COVID-19 recovered? If there is no benefit, whether personal or public, there's only risk. The answer is no, it is not.
Thanks, Chad.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public input tonight? All right, seeing none, just need a motion to adjourn us, please.
So move Jensen.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Counsel Erickson. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? All right, we're adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.